If I can have everyone's attention, we will begin. I want to welcome everyone to the work session for the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees. We appreciate everybody's attendance here and your interest in the efforts and the work of this board. And at this time, I'll turn this over to the chancellor.
Great, thank you. I appreciate it. Well, welcome. Welcome back. One quick announcement, and maybe the announcement has already been made, but I think presidents, you know that you each have a box over there. Somebody tell you that. And we will carry it down for you if we need to. Yes, we have people ready to do that. But those are copies of the 50th anniversary book. So we'd rather carry it back than put it back in storage. So anyhow, we have one item that is not on the trustee work session agenda, and I've asked Mr. Bill O'Connor to come in and address you briefly. Bill O'Connor has been charged by the governor's office to work with the various agencies involved with workforce development and come up and put together a statewide workforce strategic plan. And so he's going to come and tell you a little bit about that process, what's been thus done thus far, and what to expect. Bill?
Thank you very much, and I appreciate the opportunity, and I will be brief. What we're trying to do is to make sure we understand as much as we need to know so that we can develop the right messaging going forward, so that people understand what we're trying to do and why. The best example of that, I was picking up carpool one day for my daughters in the sixth grade, and there were three girls in the carpool with us. And one of them, I'll just call her, she was very effervescent, I'll just call her that. And it was report card day, and I'm not going to brag on my daughter, but I knew she'd done fairly well. But one of the girls who was very effervescent in the car got in, and I won't mention her name, some of you may know where I was born and raised, grew up in Tuscaloosa. And so I asked her, I said, "Dawn, how'd you do on your report card?" You know, she'd been thinking all day. She said, "Oh, Mr. O'Connor, I made all As except two Bs, a C, and a D." So I knew right there, boy, I mean, we learned from her to get our message right. She was prepared for daddy and mama when she got home, so. But let me tell you what we're trying to do here. We've retained a group that did a lot of work in Florida, and they've been up here, some of you may have talked to her and met with them, but they met with all of our regions, they've met with a lot of our leadership in this room, and they'll continue to meet with others to try to get as much information as we can. By tomorrow, we're going to send out a six-question survey that's going out to over 1,000 people and be most everybody in this room. We'll receive that from the governor. We ask you to take a few minutes and fill that out, and it'll be related to workforce. And your input is valuable, it will be considered, it'll be looked at, so know that that's on its way. And then the other thing that we're doing, and we got a first draft of it, we're going to send out a benchmark survey to 600 registered voters in this state, so that we'll better understand what they think about us, about our community college system, about the work that they do, what we think, what they think we ought to be doing and how we ought to be doing it, so that we can have this benchmark we need in order to move forward, to be very helpful information to us. We might think we know, we might hope we know, but this is going to statistically tell us what they think about who we are, what we are doing, what we should be doing, and how we should go about it, because having that information is very, very important to us, so we'll know what's on the minds of those who fund us in this state, those who provide the tax dollars to us to help support the programs and projects that are important going forward. We have a real opportunity here. We have great alignment from the leadership and the legislature, we have some here, the chancellor's office, I can go through our K-12 leadership and others who say now it's the time for us to invest in our ability to make sure that we have a workforce to meet the future needs of the industries that are here, those that we hope to grow, and those that we hope to recruit. And so that's a very important thing for us to be involved in, so we want to get this right. So our goal is to have a plan, a strategic plan, the chancellor mentioned, in time for recommendations to be considered by this board, to be considered by our legislature when they come in in February, to be considered by the governor, and other decision-makings, because it's going to require investments, that there's a lot of change going on. I do a lot of work in the healthcare industry, and you know how much change is going on there. You know, I told people, I said, "In 1955, I go to the doctor," so old I am, "1955, I go to the doctor in Tuscaloosa to get my immunization shots, and the doctor's standing there, and the nurse is standing next to him, and they talk to my mama, and I'm crying because I'm scared to death, and they're going through what this is and what it means and why I need to get it, and all I know is I'm scared, and we're in there about 20 or 30 minutes." And I went and got those same shots yesterday by the girl at the cash register at CVS. I don't know whether she even went to school, she made change for my... That's a big change, isn't it? And so the point I really tried to make to you is change is here, and it's coming, and it's going to be greater, and it's going to be faster. And the real question, are we going to manage that change, or are we going to let that change manage us? And I'd rather us manage that change. That's why the work that we're doing now, this research work, is so critical for us to better understand the environment in which we're going to have to work in going forward. So that's really the purpose of it. We'll all have a chance for input, we'll all have a chance to evaluate, we'll all have a chance to analyze, and once we gather all that data, this is going to be real similar to Accelerate Alabama. If you look at that report that they did in economic development, out of that strategic plan came in the incentive packages that the legislature considered, the consolidations that you saw taking place in our Commerce Department, where they put various agencies in there, funding requests for new and better ways for us to recruit these industries and keep the industries that we have. We want those same kind of very specific results out of this plan, things that we can ask our leadership to do going forward, things that we need for them to do, and investments, because what we have to make this is not an expenditure, but an investment that pays dividends. And the work that you do, it just matters, it just matters. Again, growing up in Tuscaloosa, we can talk about what took place at Mercedes, but let me tell you, there were 485 in my graduating class in Tuscaloosa, because it was only Tuscaloosa High School and Tuscaloosa County High School when I went. And a lot of our people that I went to school with work at Mercedes today, and they were working making $35,000 and $40,000 a year there in Tuscaloosa. And Mercedes came in there, and they went to making $75,000 and $80,000, and their spouse is an RN or a teacher, and together they're making $120,000, $130,000 as a family, and we changed their life. Forget rollover, forget economic impact, forget all that, that family that now numbers over 4,000 with more than 10,000 people every day going through the gates of Mercedes to do something at that plant every day, because we were successful in recruiting them. And we got to make sure the industries like that have the workforce that they need, and that we make the right investments to train the people, and to make sure that they have career opportunities, and they have choices, the students that you teach, whatever those choices may be, that are best for them and their families, and for the states, and they have the ability to provide to move Alabama forward. So that's what we're working on, I wanted you to know that, they wanted me to come by, I'd be glad, chancellor, to answer any questions from your board members. Thank y'all for agreeing to serve in this important capacity. We have a real chance to make a real difference, and I thank you for the opportunity to be part of it. So with that, chancellor, I'd be glad to answer any questions, the board members, and those in the audience here, kind of where we are. We have a target date of January 15th to finish this. So that's where we're fast-tracking, and we're going to have a report and recommendations, and senators here and others who will be evaluating those, the governor will be evaluating those, and this board will be evaluating them and using them to help guide our work going forward.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate the time. Thank you very much.
Okay, our next item is from fiscal, two items there. Jane, I believe you're going to give us an overview on that.
If no one objects, I'd like to sit here.
Sure.
So that your backs aren't too...
Make sure that mic has enough volume, too. I'm not sure if the gallery can hear you well, another man...
Can you hear me in the back? Okay. The first item, fiscal item on the agenda, is MMI. Marion Military Institute is requesting to increase their room and board rate by $500 annually, their medical fee from $130 to $150, $20 increase annually, and their uniform, one-time uniform fee from $1,850 to $2,470 annually. The, I believe it was last fall, their food service company dropped them, so they had to scramble to try to find someone that would provide meals for the students. And the best choice that they had was, of course, more expensive, but I understand the quality of the food is much better. The cadets enjoy the food. I think I heard the comment that they were getting a lot of chicken nuggets and fries from the last vendor, so this vendor is a much better vendor. The medical fee, and I'll go back to that, the last time the increase, the room and board increase was in 2014. And these rates will not go into effect until fall of 2016, if y'all approve. But the medical fee is for, they want to enter into an agreement or insurance-type policy with an air vac, air ambulance capacity that has the capability to airlift the students if there happen to be a major injury. They could airlift them to Tuscaloosa or Birmingham. And I believe the cost of that is about $13 a year, and that would cover all the students, they wouldn't have to pay anything other than that $13. And the additional funds, they do have a nurse practitioner, I believe, on campus, and they support that department, so any additional funds from that would go for the, would help to provide services to the students. The uniform fee is each freshman student pays a one-time fee. That uniform serves them through their both years of college. Also, the fee increase would include any alterations to the uniform while they're there. And the Army ROTC detachment currently provides the students with an Army combat uniform, and effective fall of 2016, they will no longer provide that, so the college will be responsible for that as well, out of that fee. Are there any questions?
That is a good radio, maybe air vac. You'd say 165. Being rural, offensive.
I thought so, too. It was my understanding that even if the student does not have the insurance, that's all they'll have to pay. It will cover it. Any questions?
Other questions? And I might add, I was at Marion, I guess about a month or so ago, and I don't think the colonel put the students up to this, but I can't tell you how many students came to me and just said how much better the food was, and that it had really become, it really become an issue that had an impact on morale on campus. So I think it's made a huge difference.
Right. Okay, the next item, if you would, there are actually a couple of items that we would like to take at the same time. The item number two and item number eight. Can't hear...
Probably item nine.
Okay, am I looking at the wrong?
And I'll walk them through nine, if you walk them through two.
Okay. Okay, item number two. Let me get organized again. I anticipated a lot of questions, so I had a lot of backup information. Okay, the next item is the budget, our budget request for the community college and the system office. We are requesting over $428 million in ETF for... Can you hear me back there? Is that better? Is this better? Can anyone hear me? Can you hear me in the back? Okay. We're requesting over $428 million in ETF funds for the community colleges and the system office. And included in that is a 10% cost of living increase for system employees and the system office. If you look on the second page, it details the budget itself. I don't know if you want me to walk you through...
I was going to ask, which line item reflects the 10% increase?
Each line item.
Each line item.
If you look, it is. Well, the first line item is the total O&M, that's the college, the two-year college O&M, and that reflects the 10% COLA, cost of living increase for the system employees. And also, they're projecting an increase in TRS, in teachers' retirement, and in insurance. The insurance is going from, the projection is $780 to $800 a month, and the TRS, I believe, is $1,194, and it's projected to increase to 12.01, and that's for tier-one employees. The second line item on here is the prison O&M, we're not requesting an increase there, that one is just the standard, it's been the standard for the last several years. And most of that money goes out to the colleges, a good portion of it is all for prison education. There is, and if you drop down, Marion Military, MMI, has their own line item, there is a slight increase there for the 10% COLA, and the next major line item would be the ATM, the Alabama Technology Network, and that one also, we have a small increase to cover the COLA and the increases in TRS and health insurance. And then last but not least, you'll see the system office, and we have several line items, the office, the system office administration, the chancellor's administration, there's a slight increase. That is, and let me go back a little, I guess, back to the two-year college, and the chancellor's going to talk about this some, too. The two-year college appropriation includes $2 million to provide supplements for instructors in the high demand...
And I'll address that in just a moment.
And the chancellor will talk to you about that. And I, we'll go back to the system office. The system office, we have a slight increase, as I mentioned, for the COLAs, and the increases, projected increases in TRS and P... We're actually CEU up here, but they're projecting our insurance to increase from $825 to $875. And of course, we're under TRS, just as colleges are the teachers' retirement system, so we will, we're projecting the same increase to the 12.01% for the employers portion. And you can see the different line items, the adult ed, Knight versus Alabama, special populations, the different line items in the budget. And this was presented, the budget was presented to the EBO, the Executive Budget Office, last week, but we also submitted a letter at that time letting them know that that is our projected budget, and that it is pending your approval.
Some of this may make more sense, I'm going to take this out of order, but if you would go to tab nine, you'll find the Alabama Community College System 2016 Legislative Agenda. Let me just walk you through that. I'm going to try to walk you through it without getting frustrated, but you'll hear that in my voice. You heard what Mr. O'Connor just told us, how important we are. Well, how important we are is we haven't had an increase in eight years, that's how important we are to this state. So what we're going to be doing this year is we are asking for what I consider to be a very moderate 10% cost of living adjustment. That's 1% for every year we didn't receive anything, plus 2% the year that K-12 received one and we didn't. That brings it to 10%, and that's a $35.8 million chunk of money. We have fallen so far behind in our salaries right now, we are no longer competitive. And it is, we just can't do business, I'm sorry, we cannot continue to do business. So that's the one item that Jane referred to. The second, this is the increase for health insurance and retirement benefits, and it's a $1.5 million request. You can see that under item two. The next item is the A&amp;M ASU Transfer Scholarship Program. This grew out of an appropriation, a settlement of some years ago, and we put a quarter of a million dollars in to address that scholarship. Then we have some very special and troubling needs that frankly, we're at the very end of our rope in terms of what we can do, and that's in our technical programs. We are losing technical instructors to business and industry on a weekly basis, and once they're gone, we don't get that history back. And in most cases, they go for $20,000 or $30,000 or $40,000 more than we can, we have, we're stuck with our salary schedules, and we simply can't compete. And so when we're asked, "Why can't you offer more classes in technical areas?", it's because we can't get professors who can teach those areas, where they can go out and they can double or triple their salary. So we are asking for a $2 million supplement, this is a Band-Aid, this would be a supplement that would allow us to address the immediate issues surrounding those high-wage, high-skill areas on both academic and technical side. So, and we're going to have to go in and fix it more permanently, so again, I want you to know, this is just a Band-Aid. And then the final, the final item on the agenda also addresses a huge need that we've not been able to address in years, and that is a chunk of money for facilities upgrades and for instructional equipment. Like many individuals believe that the $50 million that came out a couple of years ago came to both K-12 and the two-year system, that is false. We didn't get any of that money. That was only K-12, and that's the way it was intended to be. And so we have, we have a desperate need for infrastructure issues to be addressed. Otherwise, again, we're not going to be able to address what we're being asked to address. And so we're asking for $50 million to, as a starting point. This is for next year to begin to address the issues that the president sitting behind me are facing every day. So the items that Jane was talking about and the increases, the majority of those increases are itemized on our legislative agenda. And again, I want you to know that we did not develop this in a vacuum, we have been in touch with our legislators almost on a weekly basis, and the governor's office and all kinds of others, and I get feedback, of course, all the time from the colleges. And again, I think, I think my colleges would say this is not nearly enough to cover what we need to cover, and I would agree, but we feel like this is a reasonable starting point. So in any event, I'd be glad, I'd certainly be glad to answer any questions that you have about that. Yes? Yes, Jimmy, you want to?
Let me expand a little bit on what Bill O'Connor was saying and supporting what the chancellor was saying. And give you an example, chancellor, Tim Offer, myself, maybe a couple of other people here, we sat in Mobile and had probably, I'm guessing, around 12 to 15 of the major, how are you with that, major employees in that area? And in the course of the discussion, what do you need, run around the room? And in that course of the day, Gene, I believe, they were somewhere in the neighborhood of 6,000 potential jobs that if people were trained, had a skill, they could have gone to work. Well, what I'm looking at, and what the chancellor has been talking about, is we have the regions all over the state, this was set up by the Workforce Planning Region in Mobile area. We have these regions across the state, some of you are participating in those, and we are accumulating information all the time about how many jobs are needed in the quad city, in Jefferson County, in Auburn, Opelika, and you just pick it, in the major population areas, but not limited to that. We certainly need to be dealing with the sparsely populated areas where jobs are very difficult. And this is all coming to a head, and I know who they're going to turn to and say, "Y'all provide the jobs." And our presidents can't do that alone. The community can't do it alone, and the state is going to have to step up to the plate and provide some significant capital investments in order to provide those jobs. And it's more than just talking about it, we're going to have to get serious about it. And that's what we're trying to do with the research, so we will know what the community thinks, and get focused, so we can tell our legislators, we've got to be focused on this, because, look, if there was a new industry that they thought would bring 2,000 jobs, they'd probably give them $10 million just to buy them to come here, and I'm not being negative about that. I'm just talking about their real jobs that could be had in this state if we can provide the training. And so I'm just trying to reinforce that point, because it's going to be a serious issue if we don't start working today to resolve it.
Good, thank you. Any questions or comments?
With respect to what Mr. Baker just said, do we have any metrics to help understand what the magnitude of those unfilled jobs are? Because we hear all kinds of estimates with respect to potential new industry and what it could do. What if we filled those? What is the economic impact?
Well, I can't answer that question, but we are in the process now. We've worked with Saudi Sea down in the Mobile area and interviewing in the individuals of companies and said, "Okay, if we could do this and you could do this, what would that do?" Because until it becomes real, it's kind of out there in the cloud.
Right.
But we got to develop that process, and I saw Tim in here earlier, we talked this morning about that very same thing over in the east part of the state, and we've got to start developing that, make it real.
That storyline's critical, I think.
Yeah, you're right.
And we will have that information, we're gathering that as we speak. Other questions? Yes, please.
Chancellor, I just want to affirm what you and your staff and Jimmy are doing with this and what your goals are. This system reaches so many, it just reaches all of average citizens, and it needs to be properly funded. And we need to be competitive with neighboring states and be able to retain good technical instructors and afford to pay our faculty. So I affirm what you're doing, and I hope you'll be successful. Hope we will be successful.
Again, at the risk of being redundant, I know how frustrating it is for our presidents, know what they need, and know what they need to do, at the same time watching their best, in many cases, technical faculty leaving the system forever. And we just have to stop that bleeding, and this will go a long way to do that. Two other quick items that I'd like to mention on the legislative agenda that are also important that aren't there, but I want you to know that we are working behind the scenes and we're going to be doing this. There was an issue involving transfer of property from the State Board of Education to the Board of Trustees, and it looks like that may be easiest to address through legislation. And so we're working with our legislators...
Yeah, you're right.
And we will have that information. We're gathering that as we speak. Other questions?
Chancellor, I just want to affirm what you and your staff and Jimmy are doing with this and what your goals are. This system reaches so many, it just reaches all of average citizens, and it needs to be properly funded. And we need to be competitive with neighboring states and be able to retain good technical instructors and afford to pay our faculty. So I affirm what you're doing, and I hope you'll be successful.
Again, at the risk of being redundant, I know how frustrating it is for our Presidents to know what they need, and know what they need to do, at the same time watching their best, in many cases, technical faculty leaving the system forever. And we just have to stop that bleeding. And this, this will go a long way to do that. Two, two other quick items that I want, I'd like to mention on the legislative agenda that, that are also important, that aren't there. But I want you to know that we are working behind the scenes and we're going to be doing this. There was an issue involving transfer of property from the State Board of Education to the Board of Trustees. And it looks like that may be, may be easiest to address through legislation. And so we're working with, with our legislators on that. And also included in the budget is the $10.2 million for dual enrollment. That's the amount that we received this year. And so that's, that is incorporated in that as well. We really feel like the dual enrollment program has been wildly successful and one that must continue. And it also helps us fill the pipeline that, of workers that we so desperately, desperately need. Okay, great. Thank you, Jane. Okay, next, under instructional, we have, have two items, one from Gadsden State and one from Trenum State. And the key is... Geez, here. I may be walking you through this. The, the first item, item number three, is an Associate of Applied Science degree and certificate award in salon and spa management. And it is simply a request for a new degree and a new degree track. And this is, again, an area that has, has yielded many, many jobs in their area. They do market research and all that's necessary in an effort to address that. And it has been vetted in such a way that we feel like it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a very important direction for them to, for them to go. And, and then for Trenum State, this is also a new degree, Associate in Arts and Associate in Science. And this grew directly out of, again, a very exciting development for Trenum, and that is the fact that they became accredited by SACS about a year and a half ago. And, and so this, these, there are various steps that you must take, and this will allow them to take advantage of, of two degrees that are very transferable and will, in my opinion, have a major impact on their enrollment in the, in the future. So I certainly would be glad to answer any questions you would have about, about either of those. And I know their Presidents are here. If you have questions, I can't. Okay, under workforce, we have two items, and I believe Tim Alford is going to walk us through that. Any questions about either of those two?
Chancellor, could the Facilities and Infrastructure Committee get a list of the equipment being purchased to be added to the?
Yes, for Calhoun?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Both Calhoun and the next from item six.
Wallace, Dothan, that's in your folder.
That's in the folder.
Yeah, it is in the folder. We will get the one to you from Calhoun. Good. Other questions about either of those items?
I noticed on the fiscal consideration, the state of the funds will come from the Alabama, Florida Technical Employment Network Grant. When was that awarded?
Tim, did you hear that? Tim?
The Atten Grant is a grant that we received about four years ago. And it's, the purpose of it or the focus of it is to improve welding, meet the needs of the welding industry in the area, train welders. There are five colleges involved. It's an Department Labor Grant. It's five colleges, Wallace, Dothan, Earley, and Wallace. And then four colleges in the Panhandle of Florida, Chacoa, Spessacola, and North, North Florida, Northwest Florida. And the amount of the grant was a little over $10 million.
Thank you. Other, other questions about any of these items?
Chancellor, the, the equipment, is there going to be a need for infrastructure changes? Do you build anything that fits inside this space? Or is space required?
I don't think there's going to be any change in that, but let's ask. Tim, did you hear that question, whether there's going to be any infrastructure changes?
Tim, will this?
Yes, yeah, Linda.
Yeah.
We will need to add 24 booths for welding. And that will be done, the work will be done by our hand.
No, sir. I'm not asking you for any square footage today.
Any other questions? Okay, well, let's go ahead and move on to the next item under legal. And I would ask David O'Brien if he would address those first, first couple of items.
Good afternoon to you all. The, the one legal item we have today is the request for Lawson State Community College to enter into a bookstore operation agreement with Philat Education Group. I would first note that this contract was put out for bid, and after evaluation by the college and an outside consultant hired by the college, it, it was determined that Philat, or Philat offered the best terms with regard to the operation, potential operation of the bookstore on campus. In fact, while the agreement that is included refers to a bookstore, it will actually have a bookstore on both of the colleges' campuses. The, the company is willing to invest up to $285,000 in bookstore upgrades and install a $48,000 point of system, point of sale system and management system for the operation of the bookstore. The college will receive a 13 and 1/2% commission on all net revenues up to $2 million. And anything over $2 million, they will receive a 14.5% commission. In addition, the company is going to pay a signing bonus, for lack of a better term, of $60,000. And this is not noted in the, in the actual action item. The company will also contribute up to $5,000 per year in scholarships. We also have with us today Mrs. Sharon Cruz, who is Vice President of Finance and Administration at the college, who might be able to answer any questions with respect to the financial aspects of the proposed contract.
I see it's a 10-year term. Is that fairly standard on these?
That is my understanding, yes, sir.
Any questions about that? You may be interested to know that many of our colleges have outsourced their, their bookstore operations for, again, for a variety of reasons, not the least of which is cost-saving.
Just going to ask, were you at the $5,000 scholarship to the agreement? I know this is new. I didn't see that in the contract.
It's, it's, it's actually in the contract. It's not on the, the action item.
Okay.
See if I can find that very quickly for you.
I'm going to trust you. I just want to make sure it's there.
Never trust a lawyer. It is on page four, at the very top, paragraph 6.17.
The commission limits and the steps from $2 billion to $1 billion, is that through the term or is that annually or?
Yes, annually. The payments will be on a quarterly basis. There's also a guaranteed amount in, in the contract. The first-year guarantee is $200,000 to the college.
Was any consideration given to, to them to require them to honor the contract for a minimum period of time as opposed to the 120-day termination of contract without, without cause? I'm thinking about three years, five years, just to make sure that the college is not left holding the bag on a short-term basis.
Well, I don't know whether that was part of their negotiations. They do have to give 120 days' notice. It would, they would be walking away from a substantial investment if they were to cancel this contract, you know, on a short-term basis.
So if they were to terminate four months into it, let's say, and I don't expect that would happen. But if they were to terminate within four months, wouldn't the college be obligated to pay them back the amortized portion of the $285,000 that they expended to re, remodel the bookstore?
David, I believe in that contract, like, there's any improvements they make to the college, stays with the college, stays at the four. So I doubt they'd walk away from that four months.
That clears it from the net. Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you, David.
Yes, sir.
The next item, item eight, and you've probably paged to that. We polled all of you in terms of your, your preferences for board meeting dates next year. And as you might expect, there was no unanimous week or day, surprise, surprise. But what you have proposed, the draft copy in front of you, was the one that was most preferred. And so that's, that's under tab number eight. Certainly glad for us to discuss that. However...
On another note, Chancellor, it made any progress on meeting next month about possibly having our joint meeting with State Board of Education?
The tentative plan right now is that we have invited them for lunch, and we're going to have our holiday lunch on the 10th of December, President's Board, the K-12 Board as well. So that is the tentative plan at this point. It has not been confirmed yet, but we have sent the invitation.
So that would be in between our meeting and our work session?
Correct.
So the 10th that we meet will, will go to lunch and meet with, have lunch together with State Board of Education, and then we'll go back to our work session.
Correct, correct. That is, that is the plan, and we will certainly confirm that.
Does everybody feel pretty good about that? It's fairly efficient, so it doesn't take us, you know, changing the schedule. Nobody has to spend extra time delaying to get back, of course, December, not June month. That's what we're having a fair year in the month.
Is this meeting schedule something that we would have a resolution for the entire year? Are we going to?
We, the Board can do whatever it wants to, and we can, this is just kind of, kind of following the pattern that's been set. And we came up with those suggestions of a set week and day of the week. And I hate it, sometimes it ends up conflicting with other things. But if we end up with a major conflict, there's no reason, as long as we give proper notice for the open meetings law, that we couldn't move one of these dates a day or so, or even to the next week possibly. You know, that, that could be done, but hopefully we wouldn't have to.
And of course, if we have a quorum, those who can't attend can call in.
Right. But y'all feel free to, you know, we can even, we can, if y'all want to think about this a little bit more, but it's just kind of more for information purposes, I guess. And anything, we just go ahead and kind of, you know, inst, instigate.
I just didn't want to commit so far in advance that we did have to make a change.
Exactly. Right. If something comes up, it's significant, we look like, y'all, please feel free to communicate with me at any time, any time. And if it looks like there's, it's going to be an iffy thing on form, and we have enough notice, we'll, we'll change the date. Because I, I, my wishes for everybody. I think everybody hopefully feels that way, so.
And you can see we don't have the second one on here, but we're, the, the plan is to meet during 2016 on at least two different campuses. So we'll have one where we kind of go north, south, north, south. And so the next one is going to be at Faulkner State, and that'll be in February.
That'll be Gulf Shores.
That'll be Gulf Shores, yes. Well, what we thought, I mean, you know, at first, it would, it would make sense, doesn't make sense probably to go north in February and south in June, so.
So now, if you're southern north, just hoping we can get there.
Get there, well, that's, that's a good point.
Chancellor, maybe after this, the next year, you know, if we can consider going to the quarterly meetings, or maybe meeting five times a year, six times a year rather than monthly, like Dr. Whelan, you know, suggested to us.
Exactly.
All up for discussion.
Yeah, of course, that can be any, any time you want. All right. Well, let's go on then to the, the next items. And I'd like to, I'd like to discuss these all together. These would be item 10, 11, and 12. Again, you're all well aware of the fact that you approved the merger and consolidation policy this morning. And I am recommending or going to be recommending the three consolidations or mergers. And they're listed on your, on your, on your sheet there. We've certainly provided some information. We'll provide a good bit more moving forward. I think as, as I've described this morning, we have met... I think as I've described this morning, we have met with the presidents involved in these mergers and consolidations. The presidents have met with their faculty and staff. We have met with state and local lawmakers in lead-up to this meeting. So we have tried to be as open and honest and forthright as we possibly can, and that will continue throughout the process. The discussion today, and I think this is important, and should you approve this in your, in the December meeting, simply gives me the green light to take the next steps. You know, we're not voting on the merger and consolidation of these institutions. What you'll be voting on is giving me the green light to move ahead. And so what I would like to do is I'd like to ask Roger Bates if he would come forward. He has been working with me on this matter, and I'd simply ask him to walk you through the process that we would take, so you have kind of an understanding of the timeline and process and what would be involved. So Roger, if you would take us through that, I'd appreciate it.
Sure, thank you, Chancellor. Everybody just take a deep breath, it's gonna be all right. We're gonna make it. I know this has been quite a anxious time, when a lot of this has been thrown around, both within board meetings, outside board meetings. I don't know if the rumor mill's ever been quite as hot. I heard all kinds of rumors about what was taking place and happening and where all this was headed. So I hope that we'll bring a little bit of clarity for you today as well, as members of the Board. I think it's important to start with where the Chancellor left off, and that is, where are we now? What are we about to do? And what's that going to lead us to procedurally? So that it's very clear to all of us where we are in the process. The Chancellor alluded to the fact that this, the three resolutions before you for consideration of approval at the December meeting are simply motions that grant him the authority to proceed with notifying Ms. Whelan and her group of the planning process to consider these consolidations. These motions do not consolidate the schools. These motions do not, at this point in time, create merged institutions. They don't change anything except giving the open book to the Chancellor to begin the process. And when I say the Chancellor, please understand, as Ms. Whelan explained to you all this morning, that the members of SACS that will be involved in the guiding of our pursuits as we plan these consolidations will be led by the presidents and their staffs, because they are the members of SACS. If you look, just if you have one of the resolutions there in front of you, just so that we understand the substance of the resolution itself, and what we'll be doing with the presentation of the resolutions in December, go to the second page, all of the, and I'm starting not to say I was presenting this as a lawyer after David's comment, I'd like for you to find a little credibility in what we've laid out here. So in the second page, really, of the resolution is where the meat of the coconut is. The first page of the resolution are the wherestes, the preamble's, that set the stage for how this needs to be viewed, and the process and legal proceedings under which you get to the point of authorizing the Chancellor to move forward. But the ask, the resolution, the empowerment that these resolutions give are set forth on the second page of each of those resolutions, and in all three of them, they are exactly the same. And those resolutions are this: One, that the Chancellor, in accordance with the policy that you passed this morning, is authorized and directed to give immediate written notice to SACS and ACH of the beginning of a planning process for the consolidation of the affected institutions. So that's the first thing the resolution does, is authorize and direct the Chancellor to give that notice, and remember from our meeting at Lawson, that has to be a minimum of six months in advance of seeking any final approval. So that letter will go in in December, and that'll be the trigger date and the start date of our planning process with SACS, okay? The second provision of the resolution provides certain conditions under which you are, as a Board, authorizing these planning processes to begin. And please note that these shall be recommended only after public meetings concerning the mergers and consolidations that are held in the communities that are affected, that the Chancellor will approve elements of a transition plan, and I'll talk about that a little bit later in this presentation, for carrying out the mergers, that the consolidations will require evidence of efficient administration under appropriate guidelines, which I think I gave you reference to ACH's administrative code last month that lays out the various elements of what the statement of intent must address, and all of those factual matters will be detailed during the planning process by the affected institutions. Obviously, as we move into these things, we'll be moving through the administrative consolidation phase. You all remember, I discussed that at the last meeting, so that we have a leadership president involved in the three situations. That will lead us through the implementation phase of the actual presentation of the merger, and ultimately, in about a year or so from now, coming back to you for final approval. So there's a long time between today and when you will actually be asked to cast your final vote on whether or not the merger or consolidation is to go forward. The last item of the resolution is a directive and request by this Board to ask that the presidents in the affected colleges and the staff of the affected colleges to cooperate and participate with the Chancellor in the planning process, keeping him informed throughout by copies of whatever documents and filings are required, both with SACS and with the Alabama Commission of Higher Education. Our timeline for this, if you'll recall, is that the statement of intent and prospectus that is the triggering documentation for the approval of this process must be completed and submitted to ACH on or before April 15th of next year. That is the date at which, if we don't have our paperwork in, we will not be considered for assignment to a committee at ACH who studies, as Ms. Whelan explained this morning, the review of a merger or consolidation. We will miss that window, and we will be required to then submit in September. So if we don't make the April 15th filing, we're that much further delayed and behind, and I guess getting in line, what I heard from her this morning, a number of substantive change requests that they've got, we're gonna be jumping on top of a high pile, it sounds like. I will tell you that we have had discussions internally about trying to meet with Ms. Whelan and her staff to try to make sure that we are working with them in the process and trying to stay as upfront and ahead of delays and time deadlines as we possibly can. And we have met with, as Chancellor said, the presidents of these affected institutions, and I think everyone and their staffs are aware of that. In anticipation of going forward, a couple of the institutions have already scheduled work sessions, introduction sessions with their executive teams, their cabinet-level folks, to begin the process of discussing all of the synergies and the development of the items and details that need to go into these statements of intent. So least you fear, we're working towards the April 15th deadline, and that's the goal that we've set for ourselves, is to be ready to have submissions by April 15th so that we can get in line in that process. So one of you, and I don't remember which one of you asked me, but someone asked me, following our conversation about the policy and the prospect of all this going forward when we were at Lawson last month, will you all, meaning the Chancellor and all of us who are assigned this task, be able to share with you substantively justifications, thoughts, processes, synergies, what's the thought behind this process? We all know that there has been a lot publicly written about this subject, both politically and otherwise, and we know that there are trends going on around the country that involve this type of effort. But please remember that the Chancellor has already shared with you on prior occasions that the Alabama Community College system is a career readiness opportunity network. And we are interested in the workforce spectrum. We have education, both academic transfer that feeds into that, and workforce training programs on the technical side, and adult and community education as well. Some have referred to that as the three-legged stool of the community college mission. And while each of these colleges that are involved in these consolidations currently are offering all of those things, it is the idea that the regionalization of these colleges will provide a foundation for the enhancement and growth of these programs and services available to the local community. This is not a plan that the Chancellor has hatched to raise buildings, fire a bunch of people, and alter the course of community colleges. This is about building on the strengths, assimilating assets, and moving these colleges forward with growth potential in mind. The regional alignments that the Chancellor is proposing have been specifically designed to take advantage of the pool of dedicated quality and staff at each of these institutions. We know that there are committed workers, we know there are committed faculty, we know there are committed leaders in these colleges, and with a regionally focused community college, we can develop these colleges with full accreditation approval. And I think that's essential. The consolidation plans that you will see as we go forward will be designed to maximize both the educational and the economic impact of these affected regions in the state. They'll be well-planned, and they'll be designed for the local delivery of workforce. Workforce training that meets the demands of both the student and the demands of the industry in a particular region. These colleges, is the Chancellor's vision, are to create a unified vision of regions and create comprehensive networks for the delivery of localized education and workforce training that'll bring ultimate efficiency and greater accountability to meet the needs of these communities. This won't come at the cost or expense of our academic transfer programs, because these systems provide our colleges with a critical mass of stability to ensure the sustainability and accessibility of students in these communities. Moreover, the academic transfer, the adult, community education, and career tech training missions embedded in the goals of the three-legged stool are ideals of the community college system that'll be greatly enhanced by a transition to a single leadership model with a regional, comprehensive mission. This model is planned to essentially eliminate the duplication of leadership and reduce service area contentions that have often worked contrary to the unified education offering in the region, and in the absence of these local competitions and the absorbance of the geographic restrictions, that the limits of the effectiveness of the college can be expanded. That's the point. The community colleges' needs will cross multi-county areas with streamlined and unified management, and a structure that will eliminate these barriers of service and increase responsiveness, which I think all of you have heard something about. One of the most important benefits from the perspective of the communities and of the students will be the enhancement of the quality of programs and the range of workforce training programs that will be available in the local community. The newly created regional colleges will have the flexibility and the resources to enhance accessibility and expand services while avoiding duplication. I want to say this, because we have to say it every time we speak of this, any move like this needs to have at the forefront a plan that will ensure SACS accreditation. And the teams that will be working on these models will have on them expertise to ensure that we guide and measure our moves along those lines, and I've already visited with you last month about one of those things, and that is policy. You heard from Ms. Whelan this morning that we've got some work to do there to get ourselves ready to advance the ball in this arena. The other great benefit, obviously, of the regional college will be the opportunity for growth and development in the region's workforce. We've all gotten used now to hearing about regional workforce councils, we're familiar with how all that is operating, but these colleges that we hope to create out of this effort will give us the training for middle-skilled, high-wage jobs that are available in the region where the college is situated. Doesn't do much good to train folks for jobs that don't exist in their location. So they'll be very specifically designed. The colleges will also offer our current adult education students and those of interest in our communities with advancement and cultural experiences, and those programs will maintain, be maintained and continue to be advanced in the ways that we have done them in the past, and also create new avenues and pathways for additional opportunities to the stakeholders in those areas. Now, when you talk about this subject, everybody runs very, very quickly to something called personnel. What happens to me? Where do I go? The Chancellor will recommend to you in this situation that Dr. Susan Burrow will be the lead president for the East Alabama Combination that's listed in your papers involving Central Alabama, Southern Union, and Chattahoochee Valley. Dr. Reginald Sykes will be responsible as president for the Alabama Southern and Reed consolidation, and Gary Branch will be the leader of the Coastal Combination of Faulkner with Jefferson-Davis. The specific date of these administrative changes, we don't know what that is yet. That'll be determined by the Chancellor as we work through this process with SACS, and when that administrative approval is given, we'll be back to you, and I'm sure he'll be ready to move for you with an announcement and recommendation in that regard. Subject to all of Alabama's plethora of employment laws, both federal and state, personnel that are employed at these colleges will be transitioned to the employment of the consolidated institution. It is hard to stand here at this point and tell you exact head council numbers, because I personally know that in several of these institutions, there are pending retirements. There are employees who, in some cases, we're losing because of the retraction of federal grants. So there's a variety of factors that are influencing the actual personnel side, but please be assured that those personnel matters will be dealt with within the confines of Alabama and federal law. It is not lost on the Chancellor, and those of us that work with him every day, that student population and enrollment has been decreasing for us as a system. And it is our dream and our hope that the consolidation of these institutions and the reformatting of both the academic side of the house and the career tech side of the house will offer these colleges the opportunity to increase those enrollments. If I might just say, in the brief time since I saw you last and spoke to you, and I've dealt with the presidents of these affected institutions and some of their staff, they conducted what could be described as a miniature SWAT on their own, in their own institutions. And I frankly was both moved and amazed at what came back out of those processes in the way of defined synergies. These presidents and their staffs are realists. They know the strengths and weaknesses of their colleges, and what they desire most out of our leadership to their process is that we give them an opportunity to combine those strengths, to make them stronger, and provide them the opportunity for growth. And that's all they want. They really don't want much more than that, well, they'd like to know for sure they had their job tomorrow, but they really want the opportunity to bring their colleges together in a way that'll be positive for the communities that they serve. And that will be our aim, and I can tell you that is the Chancellor's directive. Housekeeping things, Chuck, I know this will be of interest to you. Facilities, equipment, supplies, the inventory, the hardcore assets these schools will obviously be transferred into and become a part of. obviously be transferred into and become a part of a regional institution. In part, the chancellor's mention of our legislative agenda having to do with real estate and things of that nature will all play a role in the details and fine tuning of how these matters will go forward. There are a number of legislative issues to deal with, including some of these mergers because of the way the colleges were formed by statute, and we'll certainly be dealing with those matters as well. Something else that I think is critical to our understanding of how this process will work is that the chancellor will ascribe and assign to these lead presidents the obligation and responsibility to develop transitional plans. Transitional plans that will not only address the temporary administrative consolidation at the schools, but long-term transitional plans and goals to use a phased-in concept to accomplish the administrative functions of the merged institutions. But all of this has to be done with some guiding principles which the chancellor has given us. Number one of those principles is this, that we must, in all of these transition plans, consider the fact that the need is there to maintain continuity of service and function on all campuses. In other words, we cannot have interruptions. Secondly, that certain administrative functions will require greater coordination than others to assure successful realignment. What in the world is that? Anybody thought about all the IT problems we're going to face? Accounting, books, records. We got a job ahead of us, folks, is what I'm saying. And what the chancellor is saying to us is coordinate those things, have a plan to coordinate those things. Thirdly, that sensitivity to personnel needs and establishing positive atmospheres for change is necessary for a successful consolidation. That sounds like common sense, but I will say this not only to you as a board, as you hear from folk involved in these colleges, but for my friends. It is a positive attitude that will make us successful. It is only looking at this in a negative way that will kill it. So the chancellor's desire, his vision for us, is that we all deal with this, with that spirit. And finally, that attrition resulting from these reassignments or retirements, whatever, should be considered in the timing of the planned changes wherever possible. In other words, be smart, look at your rosters. If people have got planned retirements, people have planned exits, people have planned transfers, use those tools, which requires both staff, faculty, presidents, and all of us involved to remember to be honest and transparent with one another, to talk freely and honestly, and to be on the table with what we're doing. That's the only way that we'll get through this together. Even under the best of circumstances, consolidation of institutions like this can be an emotional issue for some college personnel and community leaders. We know this. I know this because I've done it. It's quite a challenge. The planned changes should be evolutionary, but not revolutionary in their undertaking. Gains, and this is just a belief, gains made by expediency can be negated by loss of morale. We need to be patient as we work through the process. For these reasons, the transitional plans will be expected to move the affected institutions into the regional structure as rapidly as possible without disruption of service and sensitivity to the needs of our personnel. The presidents will be required to submit these transitional plans to the chancellor for his approval, and he will be looking for them and anticipating that they will be demonstrated in phase-in steps. Some have asked about community college names. The idea here is that the presidents of the newly formed colleges will be required to appoint committees that are representative of the students, community leaders, and staff from the consolidated colleges, and after consulting with branding and marketing experts to identify and recommend a name for the new school. The chancellor will review those, and if he determines that work to be appropriate, he will bring that recommendation back to you for your final approval. And finally, I came across this, and chancellor, if you don't mind me having a point of privilege.
Please.
I had one thing I wanted to sort of share about this. History has well documented that where good intentions exist, the whole is always greater than the sum of its parts. The chancellor's recommendation is reflective of his studied view that regionalization will allow these institutions to fully engage in one regional college. The regional college will continue to serve each community, but this service will be offered through a position of strength and will enhance access, allow regional partnerships, improve collective purchasing, and create opportunities for external funding, both private and public. The regional college structures to be planned with your approval will provide a network of highly skilled professionals who work daily to ensure that the citizens of Alabama are prepared with 21st century skills. These skills are essential to meet the future workforce demands, and a prepared workforce truly forms the cornerstone of economic and community growth. The chancellor's recommendation of these three planned consolidations is grounded in his fundamental plan to create regional colleges that function from a collective regional vision reflective of the citizens' dreams, values, and hopes of a high-quality and sustainable community. The power of synergy will be evident in the newly formed institutions, and it will clearly be a whole greater than the sum of its parts. Questions?
Any questions?
Chancellor, I want to make a comment. I want to tell you I appreciate your courage, willing to start this and go forward with it. And Roger, thank you for your presentation, and I think what I got from that is we need to do this thoughtfully.
Yes, sir.
And do it right and not recklessly, and I appreciate pushing in that attitude. Now, getting down to some of your experience, you've worked on one, you've worked on a consolidation before. Which one was that?
Several.
Okay, several.
I was knee-deep in Bevel years ago.
Okay.
And it really, honestly, was a bit of a regional consolidation because we took over kind of a section there of Northwest Alabama. Also shared in some of the Gadsden love with theirs.
So you'll be able to apply some of those, the lessons you learned from that to these? There are a lot of very similar situations.
Yes, sir.
Just like you said, combining the counting and so many other things.
And let me say, one of the things I asked the chancellor for, you know, he's a busy guy, and so a lot of stuff runs downhill around here, and so I caught this one. And that's fine. I welcome it. It's, these are challenges for all of us. But I've asked him to open the door for us to Ms. Whelan and her staff. I think you probably saw this morning how critical that relationship is for us. And it's my hope that for each of these three projected consolidations, that we're going to have the opportunity to integrate with her staff as soon as the notice goes in December. Rightly or wrongly, if you have a regulator, it seems to me it's a good thing to invite them to the table early and often. And what I'd like to do is have them at the table in helping us design the process by which we can achieve administrative consolidation as quickly as possible for these three, and to make sure that we are on a path that they find reasonable and acceptable for us to make the April 15th deadline. Because you can live in ambivalence for a while. Living in ambivalence for a long time begins to erode some effectiveness of an institution. And so it is, now that the decision is made, the chancellor knows how he wants to proceed, it seems to me that those of us working on this, and I want to acknowledge Jimmy, who's been awfully involved in helping this, Susan Price, who has worked very, very directly involved in this with us, and I don't know how many of all the presidents are here, but if y'all, the presidents would stand of the affected institutions, would y'all stand for a minute? Mark, these folks, Dr., these folks, and I think Gary couldn't be, they took the bull by the horns. Thank y'all, and thank you for helping me. They took the bull by the horns immediately. You know, those were some touchy conversations, you know, to bring folks in and have that first discussion about this. They all acted like professionals, and they have already started motivating and working with their campus leadership. And if we can keep that atmosphere heading into our SACS endeavor, then we're going to... Now, I'm not saying we might not have a tussle or two along the way, because there can be difference of opinion with a committee. But I think maintaining that relationship, and something that you saw today out of Ms. Whelan, she, I think she has a little heart for us. She knows a little bit more than we might realize about our history, and I think she's going to do all she can to give us an administrative committee that's going to help facilitate getting this done, Mr. Chairman. I really do.
Mr. Bates, chancellor, I just want to make an observation and a comment. Having functioned and worked in industry for 33 years.
Yes, sir.
The apprehension and anxiety that's in that, in the room right now, and that will be manifested from the effort that the chancellor and his staff are going to put forth to bring this about, is understandable. But from a business standpoint, from an economic standpoint, this is the kind of stuff that I'm accustomed to seeing in my entire career. And I was just in a meeting two days ago where the CEO of my company, you know, made a statement in a video broadcast that our management staff has got to become adaptable, adapt and comfortable with working in an atmosphere of discomfort. And the reason for that is, is not just for the sake of discomfort and generating anxiety, but it's a matter of competition and beating competition and surviving. You cannot, companies that survive and that thrive are not the companies that become comfortable with the way things always are. You've got to always be innovating and looking at better ways to do things, more efficient ways to do things, and the economies of scale has to kick in. What the system, what your system is about to experience, trying to explore experiencing is what my business has been experiencing for the last 20, 30 years. And it does not feel comfortable, and it's not necessarily a lot of fun to do. But what is fun is, is that you're still considered to be a viable entity, and you're still in operation, you're still in business. And for that reason, I just want to say that even though it may not meet status quo, I think that, matter of fact, I'm sure that, that the system better get down to business of making something happen. You have got to justify your existence, or you won't be surrounded. I'm from the textile industry. I can name at least two major, major players in my industry that are no longer there. And out of respect for those, those companies, and out of respect for the people who used to work for those companies, which I'm positive family members are in this room right now that used to be a part of those entities, they're no longer here. So the company I'm with, my thought, my idea is we're going to still be there, but we're going to have to make changes. We're in the process of making changes right now that's affecting our operations. So for me, for me, even though this doesn't necessarily make everybody in the room feel good because it's going to be a change, survivor instincts have better kick in.
That is well said, and I appreciate it. I won't go into great detail with this next comment, but I want to kind of piggyback on what you've, what you've said. Although no one has gotten in my face and told me what I'm about to say here, I have no question that if we don't manage and address these issues, we will lose the ability to do so, and somebody else will step in and take care of it. And I promise, if somebody else steps in and does it, it won't be nearly as well organized or orchestrated as we'll be able to do it. And I think that's exactly what you're saying.
Well, I would just say to you all, as we go through the process, because it may be now, I may disappear from these kinds of discussions with you for a little while because once he makes a call in December, if we move forward, we're going to be at work. If you have concerns, if you hear things, call the chancellor, get with me, whatever you, we need to know if there are hand grenades laying out there that we need to address. But I guess, and for me, I just want you to feel comfortable that we're going to handle all of this with as much sensitivity for the people and the students in these communities as we possibly can. It's not lost, and it won't be easy, and it will take courage. But we're prepared, and I think the leadership that I've dealt with is prepared to move that forward for you.
Well, I think in addition to what Roger has said, and this is a little bit redundant, but I think it's, it's important. I am all about transparency, and I think it's incredibly important to be transparent, even if the message that you're discussing may not be pleasant, may be uncomfortable. And that has to be at the forefront and will be at the forefront of what we're, of what we're about. And let me just piggyback on something else Roger said. I spent a good bit of time with Dr. Whelan last night talking about this and other issues, and she has pledged to me and to us to, to work with us every step of the way. And again, it is incredibly important that that accreditation piece be attended to every day as we're moving, and again, I pledge to you that will occur. So anyway, just I think it was important to, to state that again.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Roger. Anything else?
About the box.
Yes, yeah, two, two other quick reminders that, once again, the box is sitting to my left, there, right. Each president gets one, and we're not expecting you to carry that down. We have folks that will help you carry those to your cars. If you don't, I'm going to have to carry them back to storage, so please, please do that. The other, I want to cover this quickly. This is not a board agenda item at all. I've talked a bit about this to the presidents, and this is more for information. We have, for the last couple of months, have been working with University of, we, the community college system, and specifically me, been working with the University of Alabama and Birmingham, who are responsible for a grant called the Gear Up Grant. This is a, this is a grant that I'm very, very high on, frankly, and I think it's something the community college system ought to be involved in, and we are in a big way, and I'm really proud about it. This grant, without going into great details, is aimed at going into the poorest, most deprived areas of our state and, and working with, beginning in the seventh grade, working with those deprived individuals, those individuals who are living in poverty, in an effort to prepare them for post-secondary education and a career. And again, realizing that, that those individuals typically don't come out of a family where someone else has been to college. And so, for instance, the whole idea of completing the FASTFOP, that's one of those, you know, one of those, those words, those acronyms that we use that nobody understands. It's scary, and so you just don't go about it. And even if you understand it, it's, it's a tough, tough issue to navigate. Well, they will receive, not from us, this comes from the grant money, they will receive advisors starting in the seventh grade who will track them all the way into post-secondary education. And we are going to be providing them the opportunity to go to post-secondary education at a reduced or free rate. So we have committed to that, and we will basically be providing last-dollar scholarships for them. I am, and again, I've become very passionate about this, but I'm very, very concerned about the fact that there's nobody else addressing this population but us. And, and we've gotten to the point that, to some extent, we have priced ourselves out. By priced, it's not only money, it's this language. If we don't do something very aggressive to address this population, our workforce is not going to improve. So you're going to be hearing a whole lot more about this in the future. Again, I'm very proud about this. Well, I'll keep you up to date on, on the work we're doing, but this is, we have a moral and ethical responsibility to, to work arm in arm with, with the individuals who are involved in this grant, and I'm very proud that we are. So.
With that, I'm...
So with that, I'm finished.
Does anybody have anything else? Thanks for everybody's attendance, participation, and contributions. We'll, I'll say travel, Sonny will stand, chairman.